I'd like to bring the regular meeting to order at seven oh five. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the main stand. Either one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting agenda, please?
My motion.
By Annie, second.
Second.
Second by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, uh, first order of business is the approval of the results of the campus and the vote, and adoption of the resolution declaring the results of the annual election held on May sixteenth. This will be a roll call vote. God, if you want to speak in that. Yes, please.
Before you vote on the order, the updated results, they're added to our website this afternoon. They're just slightly different because of things like the collection of absentee ballots and reviewing documents of people who voted in our paper because we had to check them and ensure they truly were registered voters through the Orange County Board of Elections. So they changed by a one or two votes from last night. Uh, for the budget, yes votes, seven fifty-three, and no votes, one hundred and seventy-two. For the twelve million dollar capital project, yes votes, seven hundred and fifty-eight, no votes, one sixty-four. For the purchase of one fifty Pike Street, six hundred and ninety-eight, yes, two hundred and thirty-two, no's. For the land swap with the city of Port Jervis, seven hundred and fifty-six, yes, one hundred and seventy-seven, no. Proposition number five, shortened walking distances, uh, was eight hundred and one, yes, one thirty, no. And then in the board of election results, Bill Anafree had seven sixty, Nancy Dunn, seven oh eight, Judy Amato, six thirteen, Michael Witt, five sixty, and Flo Santini, five fifty-six. So they've just changed a little bit by a vote or two, or three, or four, here and there. And they're all posted on our website now in case anybody wants to see them.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion for business. By Flo, second by Annie. Roll call vote. Judy?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Bill Harris?
Yes.
Mike Cockenberry is absent. Jason?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Flo?
Yes.
And I am yes. Okay. Next is the oath of office to a newly elected, uh, member, Mr. Michael Witt, to a one-year term on the Port Jervis School Board of Education.
Okay, Mr. Witt, come on up. Please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye, Michael Witt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Board of Education member.
Of the office of Board of Education member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Just to explain how this works, there were three seats for three years each, and there was a one-year seat. And the way it works is because the one-year seat was being filled by Nancy Dunn, she was appointed by the board last fall. So what happens, as soon as there's a new election, that person who holds that new one-year seat takes office right away. So Michael takes office right away. And so Nancy Dunn, she goes off the board for six weeks or so, and then she's back with a new three-year term on July one. So it's kind of an idiosyncrasy, but that's the way it works for the process. As soon as you only are appointed until you reach a point that the voters have a chance to weigh in on who your next president is.
Mike, congratulations. Welcome to the board. Thanks very much. Uh, next are presentations. Our first one is the student representative report. Jocelyn Decker.
Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jocelyn Decker, and I am a junior here at Port Jervis High School. I am the junior student representative. Before I begin, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve tonight. Some highlights for our Port Jervis High School. Youth in government, Port Jervis had two students who won the election, Naomi Florent and Governor Governor Ellis Startup for Assemblyman A. Yesterday, Naomi Florent and Landon Rercian, along with their advisors, traveled to Albany to attend the end-of-the-year ceremony. Last Thursday on May eleventh, the first multicultural night was held in the high school cafeteria and very well attended. Thank you to Mr. Wilson for this amazing event. Last Friday as well, on May twelfth, was the sand powder puff game. This event was from six to nine P.M. at Chase Field. Thank you to Ms. Lane and Ms. Doherty for coordinating this event and allowing those who helped, including coaches Dr. Bell, Ms. Rosaro, and Ms. Byrne. Funds raised will be used for the senior prize giveaway night. Both teams performed well, and team pride took the win. The high school spring concert was last night, and both the choir and the band gave an amazing performance. There is no school for students on May twenty-sixth, and this is a give-back day. School will also be closed on Monday, May twenty-ninth. June first is the U.S. History Regents. Only students taking the test will attend. All others can sleep in. Several field trips are on the horizon. The art show is this Friday, May nineteenth, in the high school cafeteria from six to eight P.M. The Seal of Illiteracy showcase will be on Monday, May twenty-second, in the high school gym from seven thirty to nine forty-five. On May twenty-fifth, progress reports will be distributed for quarter four. They'll be available online in school board. Exciting news, the high school pep band will be marching in the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-ninth. Following that, on Tuesday, May thirtieth, the high school drama club will present a Broadway cabaret at seven P.M. Friday, June second, is our senior day. They'll perform War Pride Walk. The class of twenty-three will be very busy with a biaccolate practice. The War Pride Walk through will be at HBE, ASK, and the two oh nine complex. On Sunday, June fourth, at six P.M., the class of two thousand twenty-three will have their biaccolate service at Mary's RC Church. Many celebrations will be coming up as well. Character education celebration will be on June seventh in the morning, and the academic award night will be that night at six P.M. in auditorium. Prom is also coming up. Prom will be on Friday, June ninth, and the senior music awards dinner is June twelfth. Following that, scholarship night is on June fifteenth. Our valedictorian, Zach Anha, and solid valedictorian, Rachel Durier, will be guests at the Orange County Outstanding Student Luncheon on June thirteenth. Our senior athlete, Ben Gwopin, will be held on June thirteenth from six P.M. at Erie Trackside. Last but not least, the regular day of high school instruction will be on June thirteenth, with the Regents exams beginning on June fourteenth and continuing until the twenty-second. Thank you.
Excellent. You're a good job.
We're gonna go a little bit out of order in a few minutes because we have four or five of the top twenty kids who are in transit coming back from the softball. So we're gonna press on the agenda, and then we'll come back. So just be a little patient for the top four.
Thank you. So next, we have administrative reports. First is superintendent of schools, Dr. John Bell.
Well, first and foremost, I just want to thank the voters. It was a great turnout. Just to give you a point of reference, last year, only five hundred and ninety-two people voted. This year, nine hundred and fifty-seven voted. So it was a much, much bigger turnout after a really low turnout last year. And everybody worked really hard to get out the votes. We really appreciate it. And it was a tremendous victory. None of the four propositions or the budget, they were all landslide victories. So that says a lot about the community supporting stuff that's good for kids. Uh, just to highlight a little bit, some of the highlights in the budget, college classes in the high school will be going from sixteen courses to thirty over the next year or two. Middle school honors classes, currently we have two. Next year, we're going to six. The following year, we're going to two. Chase Field is getting a new track and new turf. Glanette is getting new lights, new scoreboard and turf. The new school on these main streets is getting a homeschool generator and the parking lot between the school and Great Park Computer Home. The high school auditorium will be renovated. And the high school library will be relocated downstairs into a much larger location than our state-of-the-art facility. So it's a lot of great stuff for our kids. So it's a day for everybody to be proud of the things we're doing for our kids. So we thank you very, very much for all of that. I had a bunch of dates to remember, but I think Jocelyn covered every one of them. The biggest day and most kids, and just to remember that the last day of school for grades came through eight is Friday, June twenty-third, and that's also graduation, six P.M. that night at Chase Field. No tickets are necessary. All are welcome. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bell. Uh, next is assistant superintendent for instruction, Dr. Natasha Waldo.
Good evening. Um, the district MTSF team just completed their professional workshop series for the year. Will be presenting our two years of work at the PDJ event meeting. Our education committee will be meeting next Wednesday at three thirty P.M. in the high school library. Team members can join virtually or in person, and will be reviewing updates on curriculum, the ESSR here, the ARP, and consolidated application for the title grants for this year and next year. Our PED committee will be meeting one more time before the end of the school year to finalize next, uh, school year's conference days. Additionally, we'll be releasing the summer PD workshop series, including Teachers College Handle With Care Training, Train the Trainer, Curriculum Writing, Principal Series on Connecting Curriculum with Instructional Practice, Legal Updates, and Special Education Workshops, just to name a few. So that's gonna happen this summer. Um, and we look forward to the other year events. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, assistant superintendent for business, John Tim.
Thank you. So I first want to thank the board for their vote of confidence in the budget process. You know, you created a vibrant brand, actually. You can be motivated and work as hard as you can because you gave me that vote of confidence. I really do appreciate that. To the staff members, some of the people sitting here that helped me with the budget preparation and feedback and your input and preparation, the value that you appreciate that. You know who you are. To the community, thanks for coming out strong numbers, uh, in support of the budget and the referendum. The yes votes in the turnout made a great statement. And let's just keep it going. This district is heading in the right direction under the great leadership of Dr. Bell. Moving on, transitioning, you just got a call on your phones, uh, an hour and a half ago, uh, with a reminder of a drill that is happening this Friday. So the district will be having two safety drills come this Friday. In the two oh nine complex, the lockdown drill will start at nine fifteen, and in HBE, it'll start at two P.M. There's gonna be some law enforcement. This is what would make this a little bit different. It's gonna be a long court presence, both the Deer Park and, uh, Port Jervis. And I just found out Orange County Sheriff Department as well will be present for the drill. Just remember, this is a drill. It's a learning process. It's actually, the kids know what to do. This is now a drill that would help law enforcement become familiar with the building, uh, and some of the processes. And, you know, one thing I just sent out a memo is, is, is take a deep breath, and we're gonna learn from this. We just keep getting better in time, so. In the community, I, there's a lot that we can learn about this as well, so. Once again, Port Jervis is getting better than that, so thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Alright, do you want to drop back?
Sure.
Okay.
At this time, I'm gonna ask high school principal Anthony Lozaro to come to the podium, and he is going to introduce the class of twenty twenty-three's top twenty students, including those who just came in as long as they won.
One person's going for that.
Welcome to solo, right?
They have one on the way.
Sorry.
Let me go show them before you get down.
Alright. Alright, well, first, thank you for having us tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to share the top twenty with you. These students, this is about their achievement of top twenty, but it's also about their effort and the growth that they've had over the course of their four years. To maintain that top twenty, to be in that spot as they graduate is quite an achievement, but again, a testament to their effort. And these are not only scholars, but they are athletes, as you know, artists, and hours and hours of, uh, community service are represented on this group, so. Again, I appreciate this opportunity. What we'll do is we're gonna count down. So if we can start with, uh, we have Julius Cruz. So Julius Cruz is headed to SUNY Sullivan. He is going to be majoring in computer programming, and his goal is to become a computer programmer. Julius Cruz. Next, we have Robert Adam. So, uh, Robert is not here tonight, but Robert is undecided, but he is, uh, currently at CTEC. His goal is to, uh, have a career in the fine arts. He's doing film at CTEC, and he wants to continue it. Soon that, he just hasn't decided where he's gonna continue that study. Uh, next, we have Josh Fielding. So Josh Fielding is running a site, running between a couple of spaces, but he's going to be majoring in applied science and cybersecurity. Uh, he plans on going, getting into the networking field and again, advancements in cybersecurity, as we know, that's a big field right now. Next up, and I'm hoping I say this, who I'm majoring in is, uh, Alexis Tefano. Someone? Alexis Tefano is headed toward Penn State University, where she coached me on the sport. Kinesiology, thank you. I threw Chinese syllabus in. Yeah, I have a hard time getting from the city. So she plans to continue toward her doctorate and, uh, with physical therapy, and she wants to, uh, be a physical therapist and be in that field as a career. Next, we have Kendall Alden. Now Kendall is going to SUNY Curtis. She plans on studying political science, and there she, from there, she does want to attend law school and become a defense attorney. So we have, that's Kendall Alden. Bridget Seeger. Miss Seeger, Miss Seeger is headed to SUNY Orange. She is going to be studying library science. She wants to continue in the library field and hopes one day to be working in the Greenwich Village, uh, library there called the Center. Number fourteen, we have Jordan Elson. She's going to pursue, as Jordan is going to announce St. Mary's. Uh, she plans on, uh, studying education, and she would like to be a math teacher. That's something we don't always admit, right? Uh, next up, and I didn't see her tonight either, um, is Ariana Marchana Spada. She's going to the School of Visual Arts in New York City. She was one of our winners at ADAC, the ADAC contest. She wants to study animation and hopes to open her own animation studio. We're joined tonight by Daniel Danko. So Daniel is headed to SUNY Albany. He is looking to study computer science and also plans some minor in meteorology. In terms of computer science, what he wants to do with that, he's looking to, uh, study and make advancements in artificial intelligence. So G G P, for example, and all those, I'd be favorable about them. There's a good feeling. Uh, next, we have Leela Shahada. I did not see her here tonight, but she's headed to SUNY Binghamton. Uh, she, where she plans on studying physics and computer science. We have now our number ten. So number ten, we have Paris Khan. Goes to LSU, Louisiana State University, where she will study nursing, and then plans on being either a nurse practitioner or a physician assist, assistant. Number nine, I saw her, I believe you saw her today, right? Jalen. So we have Jalen Census. Heading to SUNY Delma, where she will be studying veterinary science and would like to be a veterinarian technician. Number eight, Penny Jones. Penny's headed to Howard University, where she plans on studying psychology, and she would like to continue her studies to become, uh, a, uh, PhD, in terms of a PhD, and be a clinical psychologist, a clinical therapist, I mistake, clinical therapist. Next, number seven, we have Jenna Walibraski. Long Island College, where she intends to study adolescent education, specifically English, and she hopes to be a Port Jervis High School English teacher. Did you hear that? Emily's Paul Sedeli. So Emily, she's also heading to Mount St. Mary's. She plans on studying mathematics and is looking, seeking to become a mathematics teacher. So we have a few teachers in the field. Madison Pompous, number five, Madison Pompous. Penn State University, Harrisburg, where she wants to study biology. She's uncertain in terms of how she plans on using that, but she does want to be in the field of, of the medical field. Number four, Emma Malli. And is headed to Miss Acordion University, where she'll be studying speech pathology and language, and plans to be a speech therapist, and is thinking about working also on a school setting. Number three, I don't believe you can hear right now, that's Ma'kmas Malinkane. She was also at the song ballgame. Uh, she's headed to the University of Hartford, uh, sports. She plans on studying sports management, and she wants, and, uh, and also math, right? So a unique combination, which I found interesting when we were talking about this morning. She wants to be a sports analyst, but specifically, I don't know if you saw the movie Moneyball, where they kind of analyze like where the players are, the best value for the buck in terms of players. So her interest is, uh, using sports and math in that way. Uh, we have number two, our salutatorian, who's headed toward Cornell University, Erin Rieffeldt. She, she, uh, studying, uh, applied economics and management at the SC Johnson College of Business. Right, and it is management degree. And number one, Zach Imhoff. A valedictorian, headed to Massacre College. While he's undecided, he does know that he's going to be publishing books someday of his own writing, right? And, and, uh, love the arts. So this is, uh, most of our top four. Again, this is a group of tremendous citizens in our building, tremendously hardworking, and we're super proud of them.
It'll be up on the website tomorrow, I promise. Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you guys. Thank you, guys.
Next item, item seven, is consent agenda item. Item A, the minutes from May second, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting. Item B, CSE minutes from April thirteenth through May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Item C, CSE minutes, annual review of twenty-three twenty-four for April thirteenth through May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Item D, the minutes of CPSE meeting minutes, annual reviews for March twenty-eighth through April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Item E, treasures reports for April, twenty twenty-three. Item F is a request to declare surplus buildings and grounds department drug. We have a motion to bring that up.
Come with.
Moved by Kara, second. Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item A, our personnel employment item. Item A, resignation instructional staff position six oh one, special education teacher. Item B, resignation instructional staff position one six six, special, special education teacher. Item C is a resignation to accept a new in district position, support staff position three six nine seven, school monitor. Item D is an appointment instructional staff vacancy two five one six, position three nine oh six, probationary, business and marketing teacher. Item E is an appointment, support staff vacancy two five three four, position five two zero, permanent secretary to the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Item F is support staff vacancy two five three nine, position four seven eight, probationary teacher A. Item G is instructional staff vacancy two five four two, position six oh one, probationary, special education teacher. Item H is an appointment, support staff, substitute cleaner. Item I is appointment instructional staff, substitute teachers, and home instruction for the twenty-two twenty-three school year. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor, please? Moved by Jason. Second? Second by Kara. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Yes, Annie?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
I just tell you about B.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? And one abstained.
Two veteran teachers who are joining us, the new to us, not new to education, uh, are both Denise and Evan. Just got appointed. Denise and Evan could both stay and be directors. Congratulations, a wonderful performance. It's time to honor you guys. We really appreciate it. Thanks for coming tonight. That was very nice.
Thank you.
Uh, next are action items. Item A is policy, first and final reading, policy number five six nine two. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor? Moved by Bill Harris, second. Second by Flo. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item B is policy, first reading, policy number is five six seven three and five six seven seven. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor? Moved by Flo. Second?
Hesit.
Annie? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, next are committee reports, uh, buildings and grounds. We have not set, nothing at this point. Okay, we need to set a meeting for that. Port Jervis, Annie?
Yes. The, uh, events that are coming up is the PVA Foot Race Saturday, June third, the Fabulous Fifty, Sunday, June fourth, from twelve to six at Riverside Park. And also, um, just coming up is the Port Jervis Soapbox Derby, which is Sunday, June eleventh, at eight A.M. on Sussex Street.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Uh, next is policy. Uh, Annie's not here, so I don't know if there's a. Oh, you got it, Annie. Thank you.
Well, I always.
Okay.
The Health and Wellness Committee met on May tenth. Jessica Eldworth, the HR coordinator, presented information about our new EAP, which is the Employee Assistance Program, provided by the called Next Gen. This program is a great resource for our employees who might be struggling or need assistance. Erin Plen, Food Service Director, presented all the wonderful things going on in food service. She discussed having salad bars in the school, scratch cooking, smoothies, machines, and having more fresh fruit in the school for our children. Marie Jan from the Orange County Department discussed a great call creating healthy, healthy schools, which Port Jervis is a part of. And Amy Lenick, our school nurse at the high school, gave an update on things going on in the health office. She is involved with the EMS club, which has twelve very engaged students. She also reported the schools will be equipped with life back devices. These were discussed on how the schools are representing to school anxiety and depression and the use of baby. anxiety and depression and the use of baby. And also, we have the Safety Committee met on May 10th. Dom Glasgow, the Chief of Police from the town Crawford, and Aaron Hopmeyer, the principal of the Port, excuse me, of the principal of Pinehurst High School, joined the meeting via Google Meet. They greeted the community on the lockdown event that will happen, that happened at Pinehurst High School on April 26th. Their input was very informative, initiated discussion on our lockdown procedures. Law enforcement from Deer Park, Port Jervis, attended the meeting to be fair for the upcoming emergency drill.
Okay, Annie, thank you very much. Next is NISPA, Flo, anything?
No.
No? Okay. DLP, Phil? Okay. Education?
Uh, no, next week.
Okay. Deer Park, Flo?
Just a reminder that motor vehicle, the event will be at the Senior Center in Deer Park, Friday from 10 to 12, and then from 1 to 3:30. So if anybody had any motor vehicle issues, you can come and see us. We'll be at the Senior Center.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. Orange County School Board, Phil?
Yes. I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible. If you remember the last meeting, I said that we were meeting with the Orange County School Board last week and the primary discussion was going to be the mandate of turning the electric school buses into a reality. We sat for several hours with representatives from Orange and Rockland, and some of the statistics that came in were just unbelievable. I'm just going to throw sub-numbers at you. Most of the school buses that are used in Orange County are what they call a type C school bus. The new electric school buses, type C, are going to run about $400,000 apiece. A single charge takes five and a half hours, and you only get 100 to 200 miles on a single charge. The chargers cost anywhere from $2,000 to $12,000 per bus. So there are a lot more cons that we were discussing than pros, definitely. The buses have been known to explode. They're too heavy for some of the bridges in New York State. The power companies cannot afford, nor can they handle, the output that needs to be put into these buses right now. So right now, there are a lot of questions on the table. This discussion is far from over. We have a couple of years before we're mandated to start purchasing the new buses. Because the chargers and the buses ought to be paid by the fleet operators and owners, therefore will be put back on the individual districts at that time. So we do have to watch this because the numbers are just ridiculous and it's going to hit everybody in the wallet within the next few years. And then on another note, Monday, May 22nd, I will be attending a public forum at Mosse's for looking to identify opportunities and achievements and success throughout our communities. So I will be representing Port Jervis at that forum on Monday evening.
Phil, I have a question.
Yes.
Has there been any mention by our governor that there's going to be monies to go along with these mandates?
Yes, there is a $600 million grant that is being spread throughout the country. Very nice. Also, NYSERTA will be assisting the individual districts with grants that have to be filled out. And Orange and Rockland will come out and do assessments upon request by any school district that is looking to update. I know cities like Middletown are actually thinking of putting bus garages on both sides of the city so they can do their runs without a problem. Because there's also discussed, we'll get to Brick Street this to Syracuse, we would have to change buses three or four times on the way to get there. So there are a lot of issues coming up. One of our speakers and one of our members is a current New York City firefighter. They brought up a lot of valid points about fires in these buses, and it takes several days just to put the fire out in these buses. And they've been known to blow up also. So there's a lot of questions that have to be answered over the next few years.
Okay. Phil, thank you very much. Great, great word on that. Not good news, but right after. So thank you very much, and thank you for representing us. All right. Next are board member comments. Jason, do you have anything?
I don't. I'm kind of at a loss on that last thing.
Okay.
Sorry.
Judy?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who came out to vote. I heard we had a record number of young, new voters, which is really exciting. I'd like to thank anyone who didn't support me, and I'm very happy that all the items on the budget have passed.
All right. Thank you. Mike?
Well, I'm glad to be here. I look forward to working with everybody. I'm glad it was a great budget vote and the outcome for voting for Annabelle's girl. Hopefully we can add a few thousand each year.
Very good.
But I look forward to under this plus issue, jumping in right away.
Well, like I said, it's a pleasure having you with us, and thank you very much. Annie?
Yes. I would like to thank the voters for coming out and passing both the budget and the refermentals. And I would like to congratulate the incumbent board members that were elected, and congratulations to our newly elected board member, Lili. I did attend the Kippen Door War, and I congratulate, and I congratulate them, and the best of luck to the participant. And I'll tell you, when I seen the students here, 20 of them, all I could think of those little, I was coming in my health office, you know, and look at them now. I am just so proud. Proud of them all. You know, I can't wait to graduation, you know? And I've got so many, "Are you coming? Are you coming?" Or, "Take my picture." Definitely, because I'm your favorite. Also, Teacher Appreciation Day. I want to thank you, all of you, for your, for your hard work, which does not go unnoticed. You are, you are most appreciative, and I thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Phil?
Yes, I just want to bounce off that staff appreciation last week. And we're here for you, and we enjoy working with you, and we're so glad and honored for everything that you do for our children, our community. Personally, I want to congratulate the top 20. I've known most of those students since they were in seventh grade, when I was over at the middle school, and I want to welcome Mike to our family.
Hello?
No.
Yeah. Kara?
I just want to extend my gratitude to the community for supporting the budget. Thank you.
And, you know, I want to jump on that, too. I want to tell you that it's really wonderful to see how the community supports the children in the school district. And, you know, not only in the school budgets, but for it has always been a very caring and giving community. Whether it be a fundraiser for a needy family, or a sick child, or whatever, I am telling you, scholarships for our students. For a small community, these people have huge hearts, and I really appreciate the public for that. On another note, I had the pleasure of doing Career Day at the ASK this morning. I have to tell you, it was pure enjoyment. I want to thank all the people that volunteered their time, doctors, police officers, beauticians, electricians. We had a variety of people, and I want to tell you, the kids are great. Very, very polite, and some of their questions would just make you out. They're just so great. So that was a, that was a wonderful experience. So I think that's it. And next would be Dates to Remember. Long list. Okay. There would be a second. Big list. Okay, Things to Remember. Thursday, May 18th is the Port Jervis Middle School Spring Concert, 7:00 PM in the ASK Cafeteria. Thursday, May 18th, HBE PPA meeting, 6:00 PM at HBE. Friday, May 19th, District Art Show, 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the High School Cafeteria. Friday and Saturday, May 19th and 20th is the NISPA Solo Festival. It's to be voted, vote for the time and the location. Friday, May 19th, Progress Reports are distributed for Elementary School trimester three. Sunday, May 21st is the HBE Color Run, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Outside Fields. Monday, May 22nd, SEAL of Biliteracy Showcase, 7:30 to 9:45 AM in the High School Gym. Wednesday, May 24th, the HBE Spring Concert, 7:00 PM in the High School Auditorium. Thursday, May 25th is the ASK Screening, 9:00 AM in the ASK Library. Friday, May 26th, High School Progress Reports, number four available on School Cool. Friday, May 26th, Port Jervis Middle School YMCA Meet the Streets Program, 6:30 to 9:00 PM in the ASK Gym. Monday, May 29th is Memorial Day, school is closed. Tuesday, May 30th, High School Drama Club Broadcast Cabaret, 7:00 PM in the High School Auditorium. Thursday, June 1st is Regents Exams for U.S. History and Government at 8:00 AM in the High School. Friday, June 2nd, Senior Day, Port Pride Walking Barbecue. That's an all-day affair. Sunday, June 4th is Baccalaureate, 6:00 PM at St. Mary's Church. Wednesday, June 7th is Academic Awards, 6:00 PM in the High School Auditorium. Thursday, June 6th is the Dare Graduation Ceremonies at ASK and HBE, 10:00 AM at ASK and HBE. Thursday, June 8th, National Technical Honor Society Induction, to be announced, vote for the time and the location. Friday, June 9th is Leadership Day at the School, HBE, and also the High School Prom. The time is to be announced, and it's at the Best Western Hotel. Friday, June 10th, Early Dismissal, district-wide secondary dismissing at 11:00 AM, and elementary dismissing at 12:00 PM. Monday, June 12th is the High School Music Department Dinner and Awards, 5:30 to 8:00 PM in the High School Cafeteria and Auditorium. Tuesday, June 13th, ASK Kindergarten Screening, 9:00 AM in the ASK Library. Also on June 13th is HBE Kindergarten Moving Up Ceremony, 9:30 AM at HBE. The Port Jervis High School PPSA Meeting, 7:00 PM, High School Room 133. And the Board of Education Meeting, Retiree Reception, 7:00 PM in the High School Cafeteria. Wednesday, June 14th, ASK Kindergarten Moving Up Ceremony, 9:00 AM in the High School Auditorium. HBE Pre-Kinderergarten Moving Up Ceremony at 10:00 AM in the HBE Cafeteria. Wednesday through Friday, June 14th through 23rd are Regents Exams, all day in the High School. Thursday, June 15th, 6th Grade Moving Up Ceremony, 9:00 AM at the High School Auditorium. And also on June 15th is Scholarship Night, 6:00 PM, the High School Auditorium. Friday, June 16th, Ardenhill CTEC Graduation, to be announced at the Ardenhill Campus. Friday and Saturday, June 16th and 17th, Port Jervis High School Drama Club Fall Show, at Friday, 7:00 PM, Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00 PM in the High School Auditorium. Monday, June 19th is Juneteenth, school's closed. Wednesday and Thursday, June 21st and 22nd is Gibson Road CTEC Graduation, time to be announced at the Davy Bull Chris Campus on Gibson Road. Tuesday through Thursday, June 20th through 22nd is Early Dismissal, district-wide secondary dismissing at 11:00 AM, elementary dismissing at 12:00 PM. Wednesday, June 21st, 8th Grade Stepping Up Ceremony, and that's to be announced for the time and the location. Friday, June 23rd, Last Day School Early Dismissal, district-wide. Secondary Dismissal will be at 10:00 AM. Elementary Dismissal will be at 11:00 AM. Report cards will be distributed, elementary and trimester three, and the Class 2023 Graduation Ceremony at 6:00 PM on Chase Field. Chris, I think you're trying to kill him. I'm trying. You got another water, Chris? Okay, special note here is the district-wide safety plan is available for review by the public. Appointments can be made to review the plan with the Buildings and Grounds Office by calling 845-858-3100, extension 17501, or by emailing lhandershaw@pjschools.org. And the next board meeting will be held at 7:00 PM in the High School Cafeteria on Thursday, July 6th. This will be our reorganizational meeting. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Flo?
Second.
Second by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.